Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado, for July 24th, 2023. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Rachel Holte.
Present.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Janice Hoppe.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
She had an excused absence tonight.
Judy Hutchinson also has a family problem.
Yes.
Um, is Val with us on screen?
She is there now.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum present.
Okay. Did you call Leah Dozeman? Yeah. Okay. Good. All right. Thank you. Councillors, you have several documents, minutes and study session notes. You have the City Council meeting minutes of June 12, the minutes of June 26, and the minutes of June, of July the 10th, and study session notes for June the 5th, special study session notes for June 12, June 26, and July 10th in your package. So that's a lot of reading to go through, but I know that you're good, good readers and editors and critics on that. Were there any corrections to be noted in the minutes or the notes? Hearing none, we'll, we'll let the, the minutes and notes stand approved with our thanks to the clerk. Are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Hearing none, we will continue with the agenda as presented, and we have one proclamation this evening, and I'll go to the podium. We have one proclamation this evening, which is a proclamation in support of Catherine Marinelli for August 2nd, 2023. And whereas Catherine Marinelli serves as the Executive Director of the Metro Mayors Caucus, a regional association of 38 mayors in the seven-county Denver metropolitan area formed in 1993 and representing a population of more than 2.6 million people. And whereas, Ms. Marinelli earned a Master's in Public Administration from University of Colorado and a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science, cum laude, from Colorado State University, and was a recipient of a Gates Foundation Fellowship for state and local government executive program at the John F. Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University. And whereas, since 1996, Ms. Marinelli has worked with the caucus to identify and build consensus on policy necessary to implement statewide, regional, and local policy solutions. And whereas, Ms. Marinelli has led our court, has led or coordinated many initiatives such as the $300 million-plus dollars in low income, uh, excuse me, low-rate mortgages and down payment assistance, housing stability, flex fund, condominium, construction liability reform, efforts to impact the design and passage of Senate Bill 21-260 transportation finance legislation, efforts to promote the passage of Proposition 123 to provide funding for affordable and workforce housing, and Build for Zero efforts to eliminate veterans homelessness across the region. And whereas, Ms. Marinelli will be retiring from the Metro Mayors Caucus after 28 years of faithful service on August the 23rd. And whereas, her service with the Metro Mayors Caucus has benefited the citizens of Wheatridge, our City Council, and the Office of Mayor. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the city of Wheatridge, Colorado formally designate April 2nd, 2023 as Catherine Marinelli Day and thank her for her service to our community, dated this 24th day of July, 2023. We are now at our public's right to speak, where citizens may come and address the council for three minutes on, on the council items, on any, any item which we are not having a public hearing and, or that we're going to discuss. We also have a special study session, and so we would invite comment at this time if you would like to speak on the special study session item. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're here in City Call and would like to speak, you may come to the podium now and we'll recognize you. And if you are joining us online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format and we will bring you into the meeting. I'll ask our clerk if anyone is raising their hand wishing to speak.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And we don't see anyone wishing to come forward, so we'll close our public's right to speak and go to our first agenda item. This is agenda item number one, our consent agenda. Counsel, Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the purchase and payment of four 2023 vehicle replacements and the purchase and payment for installation of lighting and auxiliary equipment in a total amount not to exceed of $256,559. At issue each year, the city identifies a proposed list of vehicle replacements within the city fleet. In 2023, 16 vehicles were identified for replacement. Staff recommends the purchase of the following vehicles under various State of Colorado purchase agreements. One, 2024 Chevy Silverado 3500 HD pickup truck with traffic control equipment. One, 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD pickup truck with a long bed. Two, 2024 Chevy Silverado 2500 HD pickup trucks with standard beds. The total price of the four vehicles is $216,559. Staff also requests approval to purchase, install, and/or relocate auxiliary equipment required for the operation of the new vehicles, along with the installation of lighting markings and auxiliary snow removal equipment, at a total additional cost of $40,000. Therefore, the total requested amount is $256,559. These funds for these purchases are budgeted in the 2023 Public Works Department Budget for Fleet Replacement.
Thank you. This is our consent agenda. May I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve the purchase and payment of four 2023 vehicle replacements and the purchase and payment for installation of lighting and auxiliary equipment in a total amount not to exceed $256,559.
Second. Uh, second by Counselor Ohm. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed five to nothing. Did somebody not? Oh, that's right, Valerie is in this group, sorry. So it's actually six to nothing. Thank you.
Oh, that's five. Five will work.
Sorry, I'm counting you, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay. You know, I love to be included, but not for the count. Thank you. We will go to our second agenda item. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 17-2023, an ordinance reappointing presiding municipal judge Christopher Randall and approving a presiding municipal judge services agreement. At issue, the city's Home Rule Charter provides for appointment of the municipal court judge for a term of two years. The current term of presiding Judge Christopher Randall expired on June 30th, 2023.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. Is it public hearing? It is not qua, not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. I'll turn it over to our city attorney, Jerry Dahl.
Mr. Dahl.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We do have Judge Randall here. He's served for a very long time at the city, and as the information in the packet indicates, the judge is appointed for a two-year term, is not an at-will employee as other employees of the city are for very good reasons, so that you don't have a judge that if someone decides they don't like what he's, the decisions he's rendering, then, then, uh, the, it's, the performance is really based upon his, his abilities as a judge, and you need to have that continuity in that position. Uh, the judge has provided to you a services agreement, which I've seen and reviewed and approved, but I'd ask that you give the judge a few minutes if he wants to address you. You've got information from him in the packet, but it's not often that the judge gets to see you, and the reverse is also not often true. And I very much appreciate the judge having the opportunity to interact with you and tell you about the business of the court, which, as the judge, I think, has often said in the past, is very often the only experience that some residents of the city have with the city of Wheatridge. And so they derive their entire impression of the city of Wheatridge from the few minutes that they might spend in court. And I have great respect for the role that the judge plays in presenting our city to the residents. And I'll stop assuming his thunder and let him tell you about that.
Judge? Okay. Judge, well, it's nice, nice, nice to have you here, and certainly rather have you here than, than on the other side of the bench.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody. As Mr. Dahl said, I've been here a while. I've been here 20 to 21 years. Before that, I was with Aurora Municipal Court part-time. And then I was first licensed to practice in 80, mid-80s, something like that. So I'm now the senior municipal judge in the state now. We just had a retirement of Judge Cook and Boulder. She had been on the bench longer than I had, but she retired a couple of months ago. Uh, so now I'm it. So I'm the old man on the bench now. Over the last few years, we've had, I'm gonna call them courts, you know, we had the COVID court, and we, court stayed open during COVID. Uh, now we had to cut back. Fewer people in court, people wore masks, that type of thing, but we stayed open. I think the only time we did not have court was a week when the city was closed down, but otherwise, we stayed open during COVID. Then we had the cyber incident. We stayed open. What was interesting is, we went in the basement, we had to, we had a lot of forms, a lot of documents, a lot of things that we issued, and somebody found a typewriter, one of those IBM Selectrics, and we used that to type forms during the cyber incident because nothing worked. So, didn't close during that incident. Uh, we've had virtual court, so it's not for everybody, it's not for every type of hearing, but we still hold virtual court where people call in from wherever, as long as they have, uh, they've got a computer that has a camera and a microphone on it. And I think that's the, we're going to be doing more of that. State courts are definitely doing more virtual court. Ah, you folks know we have the homeless court, and still going strong. I think we've had it now two years, maybe three years. And what staff is looking at is doing a community court. It's difficult to get homeless people in. Either they don't want to come over here, they're scared they're going to be thrown into jail, whatever. Uh, there's not a whole lot of attendance at the homeless court here, so staff is looking at having an outreach court or a community court. And the way that would work would be that there'd be somewhere in the city where there'd be a laptop staff, and I would be here, I would remain here, and then they would attend court, whatever it is we set up that community court. So I think that's something that we'll probably do this year. Lakewood's doing it. Um, I think our Vada's doing something like that, and a couple other of the big municipal courts are also doing something like that. So we, we shall see how that goes. We used to have court Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Now, it's required that I see prisoners on Monday and Friday. So now court is really full-time Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then a half-day Monday, Friday. And we have been holding court, I'd say almost every Monday and almost every Friday. There's a requirement to see people in custody within 48 hours. Some of the courts are holding weekend court, we're not. We're seeing people late on Friday or on Monday to avoid that weekend court. It's a staffing issue, it's a hassle to hold a weekend court. You have to have an attorney, you have to appoint defense counsel, you have to have a city attorney. That's just a personnel issue to, to, to hold court on weekends. Some of our projects and principles, one of the things I've always been strong on is collecting restitution for injured victims. So what we're doing is difficult to collect any money from anybody anymore. You used to be able to issue if somebody owed money, a warrant. You can't do that anymore. You now have to personally serve them a court date to come to court. So if you owe restitution, so it could be a hospital bill, a vet bill, property damage, that type of thing, and you don't pay it, nothing happens anymore. It used to be something, there was a consequence. Uh, now, we've got to go out and find them and, and serve them. So the court marshals, we now have three court marshals who are retired Wheatridge police officers. They're, they're a unit, they're a department. So one of the things they do is this, if you want to call it a fugitive unit, they go out and serve these people with papers, and then they have to come to court or they'll receive a bench warrant. Uh, so the restitution collection is significant for me. That's an important, uh, the victims are people that have suffered harm, and they need to be made whole. Uh, confidentiality of records, big, that's big with those mental health records, juvenile records, drug and alcohol treatment records. So an important part of any court is confidentiality of, of records. We're working on the ADA website compliance. It's something that goes into effect, I think, next year, but I think the city's way ahead on that. So the website is user-friendly. Uh, our customers, if you want to call them that, their defendants, law enforcement, parents, juveniles, witnesses, attorneys, interpreters, uh, we're working towards having everybody understand the process, especially pro se or non-represented defendants. So there's procedural due process, along with substantive due process. And you folks have been approving the Special Populations Fund. It was 5,000, I think it's 10,000 now, and it's to pay for whatever needs to be paid for, for indigent persons. But that's typically a drug and alcohol evaluation classes, programs, UAs, that type of thing. And, uh, we're still using that, and that's still important to the court. And if you've been next door, you saw we put in a, it's called a bar, but when I told Patrick we would put in a bar as a joke, he thought I meant, you know, a liquor bar, but it's actually the railing that goes across the courtroom. So we've added that. We're going to do some other office upgrades, too. We're working with Dan Byer, Maria, her department, and a contractor. We're gonna change, remodel the offices, use the space better, so that'll be happening. I don't know that it'll start this year, um, but we're doing the design work now on Oh, something interesting about court. We only have, right now, we have 11 employees. Uh, normally, we have 12. We're down one judicial assistant. 60% of our staff have been here 20 years or more, and we have one staff person, this is the only job she's ever had, she's been here 40 years. So she, I don't know that she's the longest standing tenured employee, but one of them. I think it's maybe the top two or three. So we've got a lot of people that have been there quite a while. We just added a judicial assistant. It was a position we filled, it was vacant for a while. We just hired one about a month ago. And I mentioned the court martial unit, you know, they do building security, court security, uh, deal with First Amendment auditors. And I know I've mentioned the council, I think the last time I was, I was doing this. This is an interesting court in that, you know, we have three cities around us, state highways, and we have a diverse population, and we have a lot of homeless people that, uh, the law enforcement has to deal with, a lot of mental health issues, substance abuse issues, that type of thing. Um, so this is pretty beefy municipal court. It might be a small city, but, uh, our customer group is the entire metropolitan area. And I think you folks know we do abatements, those are property nuisance cases. Some cities do not. That's a pretty strong part of the docket. I'd say we have one case a week that's an abatement. And we do the administrative hearings. I don't handle those, another judge does, but we do both the administrative hearings and the property nuisance abatements. I think that's all I've got, unless you folks have any, any questions, anything I missed?
Okay. Before we go to questions from council, I will invite the public to speak on this. I don't have anybody signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now, or if you're joining us online, raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. And I'll see if anyone is raising their hand.
Nobody online.
Okay. And then we will, uh, close our public's question opportunity and go to questions from council. Any questions for the judge? Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you for being here, Judge. Uh, it's great to hear from you. Um, I just had a quick question. You, you answered, uh, I was gonna ask you about your, uh, the homeless court, uh, because you and I had a conversation about that, uh, I guess about a year or so ago, and that was pretty interesting. But, um, that $10,000 fund that you have, does that seem to be enough?
May I increase it? No. I think the budget's good on that. As a matter of fact, I don't think we've exhausted it the last three, four years.
No, unfortunately, no. We, um, I was just looking at it before this meeting. Um, yeah, there's, there's still a significant amount of money left in that. Unfortunately, there's, um, as the judge said, we don't, we don't get quite the participation we were hoping, but I think maybe with the community court, um, we'll use more of those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge. Is there, are you ever involved in any, like, youth-type programs?
Say that again.
Youth, like a youth-type program?
A what program?
Youth, kids.
Yeah, we have a juvenile court. Thanks for the question. Some municipal courts do not have juvenile courts. I don't think Boulder does, and that's a large city. Yeah, we have a juvenile court. It's every Wednesday at 3:30 for the arraignment, so that's the first time you come to court. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays are for sentence issues for juveniles. And I've set it at 3:30 so they don't miss school, they leave school and come over to court. It's not as big as it used to be, but I can tell you now, it's marijuana, alcohol, and fighting. Those are the three most common cases that we see in juvenile.
Any additional questions from council before we close our public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Judge. I'm going to close the public hearing, and Counselor Ohm, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill 17-2023, an ordinance reappointing presiding municipal judge Christopher Randall and approving a presiding municipal judge services agreement on second reading and that it takes effect immediately.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Holte.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Judge. Um, I tell the story almost every, I think every time your contract's been renewed, but my first experience with civic life in the city of Wheatridge was having to go to animal court, um, because my, one of my dogs had gotten out and bitten the neighbor's dog. And I was the very last case for that particular round of animal court, so I got quite the colorful introduction to various animal issues, including livestock at large in our city. And, um, I still think of that as my, my first civic experience, but the other side of it was a very fair court and, um, good, good to work with, and it was, um, not just somewhat entertaining, but also an introduction to the, the kind of court that you run and that reflects the city's values. So I'm excited to vote in support of getting you back, back on. You've been out of contract for a few weeks, so I hope you haven't been losing sleep.
I'll come back and see us.
Is there any further discussion?
I hope I don't have to.
Sorry. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm excited to have you back, hopefully, uh, here soon, um, but I, I know you've been here quite a, quite a long time, and, and we appreciate having you. I, I think, uh, in, in all my conversations with you, you've always seemed to be somebody who, um, doesn't have an opinion one way or the other, but you always kind of look for the best possible outcome, and I think that's something that's really important as a judge. And I also think that you're also not only the judge, but you're a department head, and to have staff that's been here as long as, as that, that's, uh, that says a lot about you as a leader. So, um, it's, it's great to have you back, Judge. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judge Randall, thank you so much for coming back before us and, um, offering us your services for another two years. I realize that you could go to other municipalities or retire if you wanted to. Um, and I, I too have had a similar experience in your court. It was with, um, one of my teenage drivers, and I can tell you that one of my teenage drivers was in your court, and one of my teenage drivers that same week was in a court in Cherry Hills. And the difference between the two courts and the way you treated the, my girls compared to the way they were treated in, in Cherry Hills is significantly different. Um, you speak clearly, you wait patiently for their answers, um, and, and I can tell you as a teenager standing in front of a judge, like, you're scared to death, and it, you really give it an opportunity for them to, you know, kind of tell their, tell their story and tell their piece. So I, and I appreciate the way you run your court, and so thank you for coming back for a couple of years.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further, further discussion? All right. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously, five to nothing.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Judge. We appreciate you having me here.
Thank you.
Before another, another couple of years. Uh, we will go to agenda item number three. Counselor Holte, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 18-2023, an ordinance approving the sale of certain property owned by the city located at 7575 West 44th Avenue. At issue, the city purchased the bank of the West property located at 7575 West 44th Avenue in January 2021 for right-of-way required for the improved Wadsworth project. After the necessary right-of-way was dedicated for the Wadsworth project, a remnant parcel of 15,435 square feet and a structure remains. Foothills Regional Housing has made a request to the city to contribute this partner, this parcel, for inclusion in, to the Ives Affordable Housing Development Project.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. May I have a motion on this item?
Yes. I move to approve Council Bill Number 18-2023, an ordinance approving the sale of certain property owned by the city located at 7575 West 44th Avenue. On first reading, order it published, public hearings set for Monday, August 14th, 2023, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in city council chambers, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppe. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. That concludes our business items. Let's go back to the agenda, and, um, I think we're gonna go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Uh, nothing else this evening, but we do have a special study session right after this, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go to city attorneys' matters. Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll have elected officials' matters, and I'll start with- And I'll start with our, uh, let's see, we have Counselor joining us online, and I really appreciate her being with us. Anything tonight, Counselor Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate so much that I'm able to join the meeting tonight, um, via Zoom and appreciate, um, just all the updates I'm getting about things happening. And, um, please, uh, just for, um, any residents, uh, who, uh, are feeling like, uh, they may not be able to, to reach me, I'm, I'm getting back online and will be checking my email more regularly now. So if there has been some delay, um, I'm digging back in there. I've made it a goal for this week that I'm gonna get back to some of those emails and appreciate any of the grace that you can give me for any delays. And then also, I wanted to, once again, just shout out our incredible Parks Department, Parks and Rec, um, department. Um, I've, I've talked a lot about, um, the Wheat Ridge Piranhas and that swim team and how important it's been to, um, my kids and a bunch of our neighbors. But Wheat Ridge, um, Parks and Rec hosted at Anderson Pool this weekend, the league tournament from all of the, all of the teams, um, from all around, um, Jefferson County and in our area. And we just, our, our facilities just shined. Um, and everybody was just so complimentary of how incredible that space is. And that's because I think we really do have just the best facilities around. And I'm just so grateful. I was so proud of it all. And so thank you. We did have the bathrooms kind of back up. I think that was more of a, um, problem that didn't have to do with the, the, the facilities per se, but people, people, you know, doing what they do to back up toilets. So sorry, but otherwise, it just ran great. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. We, we appreciate you, uh, joining us tonight on, online, and we send our best wishes. So thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of things tonight. First, I was excited to see that Wheat Ridge was awarded $950,000 for some improvements on the Clear Creek Trail. So, uh, as part of the Peaks to Plains project, but way to keep getting great federal dollars, investing in our community to make it better. And then just a reminder to everybody, it is zero fare for better air, so transit continues to be free for the month rest of July and all of August. And I am actually definitely seeing increased usage in our city. I'm seeing lots of people waiting for, for buses, and I love seeing that. Then I've got a couple of questions. So tonight, we approved the purchase for a couple of trucks for, um, the city's fleet. And I know we've brought this forward before, but is there, the city doesn't have an EV-first replacement policy, does it?
Not, no, not a, um, a policy specific to it. We do have numerous vehicles in our fleet currently that are either hybrids or EV. I could maybe let Maria speak to that.
Yes. So we do have nine vehicles in the fleet that are EV, um, and several that are hybrid as well. We do look at that. However, most of the vehicles that are these heavy-duty trucks really don't have an EV option, but we do look at that. I don't think we have a written policy, though, at this time.
Okay, thank you. I think, you know, there's a lot of incentives and court is really leading the country in incentivizing, incentivizing medium and heavy-duty trucks for electrification. So, um, uh, I'm gonna pause to actually ask to put it on a study session and talk with Sustainable Wheat Ridge. But I think, um, I think looking at adopting a policy might be worth it, but let me run it up their, their flagpole first. Um, and then the other thing that really stood out to me tonight to hear Judge Randall talk about the tenure of some of his employees, and I know Steve Nguyen has been with the city for a really long time. Could we possibly look at having a recognition at council for employees who've had significant tenure at the city? And I don't know what the appropriate, like, cutoff if they've been here like 30 or 40 years, but like, the minute some, I hear someone's been here 40 years, I, I mean, that's, that's someone I'd love to recognize at council. So is that something we could take a look at?
Yeah, we can take a look at it. I think the, yeah, difficult point, part is determining what, where you want to cut it off at. We've had people here 30, 35. If you just want to recognize anybody over 40, we can certainly do that if that's what council wishes to do. We do recognize all of our employees at our annual awards, um, event for their tenure with us, um, all the way down to five, 10, 15, 20, everybody up to 40. But, um, we can, um, whatever you'd like to do as council, we could do that.
Could maybe, uh, staff provide, like, give us a sense of if there's a cutoff where it seems like it's a, it's notable?
Yep.
That someone's been there? I mean, I'm sure we have across the spectrum, but a lot of times, sometimes there's a clear, a clear point.
Yeah, we'll look at that, bring something back.
Okay, all right, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I got a couple of things I wanted to bring up. One is that, uh, on a recent trip abroad in Europe, um, I noticed I went through hundreds of roundabouts. And, uh, the one thing I realized was that it was very safe proceeding through the roundabouts. Um, the traffic flow was, uh, really nice. There was never any gridlock. And, uh, you know, not being stuck at the, the stoplight, I'm sure there was a reduction in emissions. And then I think about that as I'm driving around the city. And just even on the minor arterials, um, like Long 38th or 44th. And I'd really like to, um, advocate, you know, as, as reasonably as possible to convert some of these areas. In my neighborhood, I can't tell you how many times I've been waiting on Allison Street at a, you know, waiting for their light to turn green, and after a few seconds, somebody's blowing through 50 miles an hour on 38th. And I feel like, you know, a roundabout, if it fit there, would be a really good solution because the roundabouts go counterclockwise. It's the, it's those left turns, um, you know, the T-bones that really cause a lot of issues. And, you know, how many times out of my day am I stuck at a stoplight, traffic's not moving? It was amazing to see how much traffic just continually flowed through, through Europe. And there was a lot of density there. So that's something I, it was really kind of an epiphany of like, wow, you know, they're doing something really, really well. And it's not just, um, France. I'm aware that City of Loveland has, I think, approximately 59 roundabouts that they put in their city, and it's, it's made a big difference. And so, um, we're, we're kind of, kind of, I know we might, you know, we're kind of new to this, but I would really strongly advocate for roundabouts. The other thing I just wanted to bring up real quickly is that, um, I have it on very good authority that the city's lifeguard program is really well-run. And this is speaking, I have a, I have a family member that has gone through the training and that how supportive staff has been, um, working with, uh, everybody on, you know, through that program. So a big congratulations to the Parks and Rec Department. It's, it's really amazing, and you just don't realize that until you start hearing the details of, you know, the constant training on a weekly basis that the lifeguards must go through. And so I really want to commend, uh, the staff at the Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation Center for, for what they're doing for this lifeguard program. Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, Wheat Recycery, I just found out, has two different levels of bike rides on Wednesday nights, um, that I'm gonna try to do. And they meet up afterwards at New Image Brewing. So if you want to see some details, please go to the Wheat Ridge Recycery, um, and, and see those details. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. I, uh, had a lot of fun, uh, last Wednesday, cutting the ribbon for the 20th anniversary for the Wheat Ridge Business Association. Great group of people, a lot of fun. Got to see a lot of people, uh, from, uh, that were on the board when it first started and, and, uh, kind of the founding members, uh, from, from 20 years ago is pretty neat to see. And Esther's did a great job, as usual, hosting the event. So, uh, so great job, and congratulations to the Wheat Ridge Business Association and, um, hopefully another 20 years of, of, uh, great support from the community. And then, uh, the mayor, Counselor Hutchinson and I, um, got a chance to eat some bund cakes at, uh, Nothing But Bund Cakes, uh, which is a new business at the, um, Applewood Shopping Center. So, um, I gotta tell you, it's, uh, I'm not a big baked goods fan, but, uh, those things are pretty amazing. So, uh, if you, uh, if you're looking for bund cakes, try to find it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll echo, um, Mayor Protim Stites. Bund cakes are really good, and even the, uh, the Nothing Bund cupcakes are good, too. So we had a, had a really nice morning, uh, opening that store, and I hope you'll, uh, be able to stop by there. And, uh, it's still summertime. Our, our kids are still out, uh, playing, not in the street, but adjacent to the streets. And I hope you'll drive slowly and carefully through our, through our city and, and just be, be careful out there. So if there's nothing else to come before us, we will adjourn this meeting. And thank you. And, uh, we're probably ready to roll for our special study session. Okay.
I was so excited. I came up here early. Um, let me get stuff here.
Okay. I'll go ahead and, um, I would like to call to order our special study session for the city council, for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for July 24, 2023. We have one action item, a comprehensive plan, and other planning efforts update. And, uh, we've already invited the public to speak on this. So, Mr. Goff, I'll go right to you for.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we'll turn it over to Lauren Mikulak, our Community Development Director.
Thank you. I'm here tonight with a pretty big staff team. Um, we've got Jeff Hurt online, Janet Easley, our Planning Manager. I think you all got to meet her when I was out. Karen O'Donnell, representing Parks and Rec, Maria Dandrea from Public Works, and Steve Art in Economic Development. And the reason we are all here before you is because we have a lot of planning to do in the next couple of years to cover a variety of topics. The comp plan is sort of out in front of some of those in terms of timeline. And before we go to a request for proposal, we want to, um, advise you of sort of what we're thinking and where we are and how we're gonna coordinate all of these variety of planning efforts. We don't have any specific discussion questions tonight. Just want to get your comments on the direction we're heading, particularly as we're each sort of refining our scopes of work. So we'll jump in first on comp plan. I just have a few slides tonight. So a comprehensive plan, as I think many of you know, but it's been about 15 years. It's our highest-level planning document. It's an overarching plan that sort of spells out the vision of a community's future based on where we are today, where we want to be in the future, and, and what we value as a community to sort of guide us between now and then. It's important because it's required by the state law, um, but it's also really important because it, it really underpins a lot of the policymaking and decision-making and zone changes and budgeting and code amendments that happens in their intervening years between each comp plan update. There's a big focus on values. That's why each community is unique in how they put together their comp plan. You're seeing the thumbnails of our neighboring communities there, each of whom adopted their updates in the last 10 years or so, 2014, 15, 17. Usually, you would see a comp plan be updated every 10-ish years. We will be, um, at the 15-year mark when we're sort of in the middle of our process. So not too bad, but definitely ready, um, to be updated. Envision Wheat Ridge is our current comp plan. You see this every time we bring you a zone change. It was adopted in 2009. And Jeff actually did an exercise where he went back and read the whole comp plan, cover to cover, and sort of pulled out a report card of sorts. What did it call for? What did we do? And we have a, a pretty interesting spreadsheet of over 100 different strategies and goals. You know, the comp plan's not in the front of everybody's minds at all times, but it's actually the sort of origin story of a lot of what you see today, from buildings to codes to corridor improvements. So we pulled out a couple of key, um, victories, I would say, uh, from the community that, that again have their origin in Envision Wheat Ridge. So the 30th Avenue Main Street vision, um, is based in the comp plan, and it, it called for a subarea plan that made that more specific. Called for a few different subarea plans, actually, 38th, 44th, and the Transit Station. We got all of those completed. It called for more investment in bike ped planning. In 2009, much of the city was not interested in sidewalks and bike lanes, and the 2010 bike ped master plan was kind of the first of its kind for Wheat Ridge. It identified some key investment sites. Clear Creek Crossing is very much articulated as a mixed-use, um, development in the comp plan. The, the vision changed over time, and that's fine. We know that we don't have a crystal ball when we do this kind of effort, but at the end of the day, it communicated clearly that we want to have, um, investment in there, both public and private, and that informed a lot of our decision-making and budgeting over the last 15 years. And then finally, a lot of our code amendments originate in the comprehensive plan. So that was the first time that we said we need an alternative to plan developments. Called for mixed use. We spent a couple of years creating the mixed-use districts. Um, and smaller code amendments, too. So the ability to have farmers' markets and produce stands actually originates in the, um, Envision Wheat Ridge, where we valued urban agriculture. So it's relevant, but it's probably time for a brush-up. We've been doing a lot of engagement and planning over the years, and, and you all know that. We summarized a lot of that in your, um, uh, retreat at the start of the year. When, we have evolved our approach to engagement, so we're not in the, in the business of saying thank you, um, for engagement, and sort of close that chapter, move on to the next. We're really viewing this as kind of a continuum. So the Let's Talk, um, program has been involving a lot of 1,500 residents at the neighborhood level. We've got a lot of very specific comments about potholes and street corners, but actually a lot of common themes as we're wrapping up the last of our ninth and 10th neighborhoods. And it's a really good time to sort of rebrand Let's Talk to shift from geography to more themes. So we plan on retaining the Let's Talk brand into the comp plan and just sort of broadening it up to Let's Talk Wheat Ridge, um, to be able to build off of what we've heard so far and kick, kick off the comp plan essentially with a really good foundation of engaged neighborhood champions. It also allows us to invite a variety of conversations on other topics. This is not a logo, but I just meant to say we can, you know, segue that to Let's Talk Parts and Let's Talk Business. We're all here tonight because, um, we realized that we have a lot of overlapping engagement efforts. Jeff started convening this whole team a couple of months ago so that we could coordinate and make sure it was clear to the public when and how they plug in on sort of the topic of their choice. The comp plan will be pretty high-level, and if you want to talk, um, the nitty-gritty of stormwater, we can direct folks to sort of when in the process that would be appropriate. Probably won't use, um, Let's Talk Trash, though we have talks about that potential. So just know that you, um, you'll be seeing a lot of the term Let's Talk over the next few years. Closing the loop on the comp plan, because we are writing that scope of work right now. We hope to go to, um, solicitation here soon. I think you probably know the key elements of a comp plan are pretty foundational. We're talking about vision and values, the policy statements related to your built environment. Land use and transportation are inextricably linked. The one thing that is sometimes tricky, again, is having folks zoom out and think into the future. So our 20-year horizon is 2040 to 2045. It's hard to imagine what each of us looks like and our community looks like at that point in time. So when we think about land use and mobility, it's really high-level. We're not trying to update the bike ped manual. There's a lot of things in there that we haven't done yet. We have a really long, great list of, wish list of CIP investments. We'll be looking more at how we make sure that our transportation network grows in lockstep with our land use plan and help affirm priorities and, uh, community support for different types of, of mobility investments. We'll obviously have a really heavy focus on community engagement, and, um, I think we're all sort of looking forward to this challenge of engagement over the next few years since we've increased our skill set internally in that regard. Wheat Ridge specific elements of a comp plan are really gonna reflect a lot of the things we've been hearing over the last couple of years that need a little bit more vetting. You know, we know that people value community character. We've heard that a lot, but we don't really know what that means. We, we need to figure out sort of how do we plan for the growth pressures that come pressures that come with being a first-ring suburb of a booming metropolitan area. We, we can't sort of build a fortress. We can steer growth in certain areas and create stability in other areas. And we can continue the conversation in terms of how that impacts affordable housing. We had some unanswered questions in the affordable housing strategy that we'll continue to have conversations in the comp plan. Commercial corridor improvements continues through the NRS and Let's Talk to be important to the community. So, we'll update further goals related to key corridors. Neighborhood commercial areas actually came up in the NRS and in Let's Talk in terms of folks wanting more third places, is what it's called. So, a daycare or a coffee shop or a dry cleaner. We don't have zoning that supports that, and we need to understand sort of where people vision that to be so that we can then change zoning and write code to sort of see that vision come to life. And certainly, we'll write the scope to incorporate these types of elements and create plenty of space for the community values and conversations that will likely shape our ultimate outcome here. So, again, our, our goal for tonight is just to sort of preview what we've been doing and what we're thinking in terms of schedule. We are at a transition point as we wind down the Let's Talk program in the Lutheran Crown Hill neighborhood and the North I-70 neighborhoods, right, as we're ready to ramp up the comp plan. We're actually kind of in transition as a staff, too. Jeff Hurt is on the Zoom. He's departing the city. This is actually his last week here. So, we'll thank him for his work on Let's Talk and the work he's done to sort of get us to tonight. We will advertise a request for proposal for a consultant in the next month or so. We will advertise to fill Jeff's vacancy. So, we have a city project lead as well. We're working on a communication schedule. Our goal is that people know what a comp plan is before we're asking them to weigh in on a comp plan, which will start the end of this year and the beginning of next year. Our workback schedule is really driven by our goal of having this hopefully adopted by the third quarter of 2025. And then, we'll sprinkle in more detail on some of these other planning efforts as we get further along in the next year or so. That's all I have. We've got plenty of people here to answer any questions you might have. I will stop sharing my screen now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mikulak. We'll go to questions from council. Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for the presentation, Lauren. Well, so, one of my questions is that when, are we going, are you going to be looking to engage a contractor? And then, the next step is to start, like, telling the, telling our public, like, what is a comp plan through, through their efforts? Or are we going to do that internally first and then utilize a contractor for the rest of it?
That's a really good question. We will proceed forward with a communication campaign before we get a consultant onboard. We have built our bench internally in terms of how we communicate and engage. Comp plans can be really expensive when you fully outsource engagement. That's not our intent. So, it'll be kind of an all-hands-on-deck effort on the staff side. Not all consultants will probably be comfortable with that. So, that kind of hybrid approach is something we'll be interviewing folks for. But yes, you will hear from us on the comp plans before you know who our consultant is.
Right. Yeah. And, you know, I, I think that we've done an excellent job as, as a city in making our communication with our community way more robust. And we've put a lot of, a lot of new tools in the toolbox. And also, a lot of people in our, in our community are, are figuring out how to utilize those tools. And, and so, you know, I, I do have a lot of faith that we'll be able to do a big piece of that work. I guess what I'm wondering is, are there any, and we've got the toolbox. Are there any other strategies that we're considering that we were, after doing like Let's Talk, we were like, oh, maybe this could be another strategy to communicate with our community?
I don't have an answer on what the tools are, but we're, we're sort of actively debriefing what's worked and what's not worked. And that, too, I think, will be a big part of how we interview a consultant and just let them know we're pretty sophisticated. What can you bring to augment our toolbox? I think, you know, we've proven that through Let's Talk, that sort of back-to-basics works, right? Meet people where they are, be open to conversations, create as many possible venues in as many possible languages. We use an iPad to do live translations. We don't get taken up on that offer as often as you think. Door hangers, postcards, really, there are fancy tools that we rely on to collect data, you know, through What's Up Wheat Ridge. But the answer to your question is yes. We're always looking to improve and build our toolbox. And a lot of that will be based on lessons learned over the last couple of years.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, first of all, Jeff, I am sad to hear we are losing you. You have just been a treasure in the city while you've been here, and you've gotten everyone in Wheat Ridge talking. So, I appreciate your service to the city and, and I'll, I'll definitely miss you. But good luck with whatever's next. So, a couple of things, a little bit building off of what Ms. Hoppe was just talking about, you know, Bel Air's Let's Talk will be over two years old by the time you start this. And I can tell you, like, from standing on my corner, I can see seven houses that have turned over in that time. So, I just want to recognize that, you know, I, I know that you will be doing this, but, you know, the people who've engaged in Let's Talk, at least in my neighborhood, there's a lot of turnover of people who may not be aware of that. So, just recognizing we need to rein people in. And I know you guys are thinking about that. I, I absolutely love Let's Talk Trash. So, I recognize that probably won't make it. And then, you know, I, again, I'm sure you're thinking about this, but Local Works is such a great partner in this. And I serve on the Partners in Progress Committee. And one of the things we've been chatting about there is, you know, how to kind of get creative with getting people excited to, as I say, write the next chapter of the, the city's book. And so, just, I'd encourage us to engage Local Works also on the, the prep work and engaging our community. And how do you not think about complaining about the thing that bothers you most down the street from where you live, but what's the vision that you'd love to see yourself in a little further down the road? So, and other than that, I am really excited for the comp plan update. This is going to be a, a lot of work for everyone, but a really fun couple of years. So, we're going to learn a lot about ourselves. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree completely with Counselor Hoppe and Counselor Hulteen. It's, it's interesting. I, I served on a committee a number of years ago when Mayor Joyce J. was, was the mayor. And it was all about communication from the city out to the citizens. And, and you're talking about, like, the robust tools we have now. And we didn't have that back then. That was, as, as a business owner who does a lot of communication with, with, with people, it was, it was really tough to sit in that meeting. And, and so, it's, it's great to see what Ashley and Jeff, and Jeff, we're sorry to see you go, have done and, and, and what the planning department and everybody has done with outreach over the last few years. And as somebody who's served on the NRS as well, it's, it's great to see the first round of, of the Let's Talk program be so successful and us see a lot of results from that. And as it transitions into maybe something else, I, I like the branding of the Let's Talk, and I do like the Let's Talk Trash as well. The more memorable you can make it, I think, the more it'll stick out for our residents. And the more we can make it, you know, less, less city talk and, and less planning talk, the more we can get it down to the level of, of where those people want to engage. I think that's going to be a big part of that. So, I, I love the direction that all this is going. And I, I think it's going to be huge for our community going forward. So, thank you for all your efforts. And again, Jeff, we'll, we'll miss you. And thank you for all you've done with this program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, and the staff for all your efforts on this program. This has been amazing to, to gather all this data. I know it was probably not a really clear when it first started out, but the results are really amazing that we keep, we keep pulling data from that and integrating it into what we can do for, for plans and policies. And really looking forward to the comp plan. Thank you.
I'll say thank you also. You know, when you look back at where we were, you know, in 2009 when we did this last comp plan, we're, we're a really different city in a lot of ways. And, and hopefully, we're a different city in a lot of good ways and better ways. And I think we have, still have a lot of, a lot of elasticity in our, in our thinking and, and in our ability to, to do things and to really reach out. And, and I hope make a, you know, help make a city that our grandchildren are happy to live in and, and that we really do it right. So, I'm, I'm, I'm excited. Jeff, I want to thank you for the work that you've done in our group and on our, on our planning department. You've done some great work. And I wish you a lot of, a lot of luck in your, in your next endeavor. So, anything else on this study session item? If that's good. Thank you, Lauren, for a great, great presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. That was our, our one item. We'll go to staff reports.
Nothing else this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Then, we'll go back to elected officials and probably start with our clerk, Clerk Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick reminder that the Cultural Commission's Art Drop event continues this coming weekend and the following weekend. So, you still have several opportunities to find an original piece of Wheat Ridge artist's work at various places around the city. Look at our Facebook page, and you can see exactly how to play. Encourage teenagers and kids to engage in this as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. I think that's a great program Local Works has going. So, any other reports from council? Counselor Hulteen?
My goodness, I forgot the Happiness Gardens report earlier.
Okay.
So, I've got bad news. It's not a good year. It's not looking good for the tomatoes at Happiness Gardens. But it's bad. My neighbor's tomatoes also look crappy. So, not great for tomato. Everything else looks amazing. And somebody put up a bunch of happy little signs, like, you're beautiful. So, when you walk through, not only are you greeted by beautiful flowers and vegetables growing, but little signs that are just happy. So, it's Happiness Gardens. If you haven't been there, go enjoy it. And then, I want to recognize a very special neighbor named Mary who lives in the townhomes adjacent to Happy Gardens. And she has a plot. And when she goes in the morning, she spends an extra 15 to 20 minutes just weeding some of the space that's between Happiness Gardens and the Willmore-Davis because she just wants to make sure the space is beautiful. And so, to me, it's also a reminder that our garden grows community. And I just want to recognize and thank Mary for her extra weeding that she does to make Happiness Gardens happy. So, not a good year for tomatoes. Everything else looking good.
It's a pretty good, pretty good year for weeds, though, in my garden. Anything else to come before our study session before we adjourn? Thank you all for being here. We will adjourn. I hope everyone drives home safely. And we will see you back here, not next week, two weeks from tonight for a study session. So, thank you.